I'm going to call this special town meeting to order. Today is Thursday, August 28th, 2025. It is 7:05 PM. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To comply with the United States of America and to the Republic where this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now we will have our town clerk, Holly Smith, read the call.
Revised warning, special town meeting, Town of New Fairfield. Notices hereby given to the electors of the Town of New Fairfield and those entitled to vote at town meetings that a town meeting will be held on Thursday, August 28th, 2025 at 7:00 PM in the Senior Center at 33 Route 37 in New Fairfield, Connecticut for the following purposes to wit. One, to consider and take action upon the acceptance of Farview Drive in Phase 3 Barnbrook Estates as a town-maintained road. Two, to consider and take action upon the acceptance of property transfer from the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation, certain parcels, rights, and easements as described in Quick Clean D dated, approved, and signed by Attorney Jeffrey Zeeman from the State Attorney General Office on 7/31/24 and maps Town of New Fairfield, map showing land release to Town of New Fairfield by State of Connecticut DOT, Gelati Road. Intersections, improvements, scale, 1 inch equals 2 feet, dated January 2024. Scott A. Hill, PE, Chief Engineer, Bureau of Engineering and Construction, Town Number 90, Project Number 1A, Sheet Number 1 of 2 and 2 of 2. Three, to consider and take action upon Amendment of Ordinance, Chapter 8, Licenses and Businesses, Business Regulations, Article 2, Peddlers, Vendors, Solicitors, and Internet Vendors, Town of New Fairfield. The full extent of the proposed ordinance is on file and available for public inspection in the Office of the Selectman. Four, to consider and take action upon the adoption of an illicit discharge and connection stormwater ordinance regulating non-stormwater discharges to the storm drainage system to the maximum extent practicable as required by federal and state law. The full extent of the proposed ordinance is on file and available for public inspection in the Office of the Selectman. Five, to consider and authorize an appropriation of $100,000 from the General Fund, unreserved for Department of Public Works road repair. Six, to consider and authorize an appropriation of $600,000 from General Fund, interest income, and $350,000 from the General Fund property taxes prior for medical reserve fund transfers in. Seven, to consider and take action upon a lease agreement with VCP Realty LLC, care of Veragey for the installation and operation of solar photovoltaic project at 33 Bigelow Road, New Fairfield, Connecticut, 06812. Dated at New Fairfield, Connecticut, this 18th day of August 2025. Signed Melissa Lindsay, First Selectman. Signed Tom Perkins, Selectman.
I will make a motion to accept the call as read. And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extinctions? And I will now take a motion to nominate a moderator. Alisa?
I make the nomination of moderator, Cheryl Reed.
Can I get a second? Peggy? Are there any other nominations? Thora?
Yes, I would like to nominate Mr. Jake Lindsay as a nominee.
Is there a second? Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay. Hearing two nominations, we will... All in favor of Cheryl Reedy?
Aye.
All in favor of Jake Lindsay?
Aye.
Cheryl got it.
Show the hands, I mean, now.
Is it hands? Yes, please.
So all those in favor of Cheryl Reedy, please raise your hand and keep it raised. And all in favor of Jake, raise your hand. Cheryl?
Thank you.
Okay, motion to close nominations for moderator. And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Moderator Cheryl Reedy.
Thank you. I'm gonna just sit down and let Jake take over. So, for the first resolution. And because the resolutions are up on the screen up there, if at any time anybody wants to make a motion to dispense with the reading of the resolution and put it on the floor, that motion would be in order. But until that happens, I will start reading through. Yes, sir?
I make a proposal that we read the screen and not listen to the first page.
Okay, we have to do it one at a time. So for the first one, for the acceptance of Farview Drive, that you're making the motion not to read and to read it off the screen.
Correct.
Is there a second?
I need names of who's making the motion. I'm sorry, sir, I don't know your name.
Could you say what your name is?
Oh, my name, Barry Gloge.
Barry?
G-L-O-G-E-B-R.
And who's the second back there?
Yes.
Okay. So all those in favor of dispensing with the reading of Resolution 1, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Anybody wants to abstain on the record? So the motion is on the floor. Is there any discussion on this motion? To accept Fairview Road as a town road?
Drive.
Fairview Drive. This is in Barnbrook Estates. Any questions, any discussion?
Any question or call a question?
Okay, Kim Hansen calls the question. Is there a second?
A second.
Cynthia? Calls the question, all in favor of calling the question. This means, before we vote, this means that we're ending debate and we'll move right to a vote. So all those in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or wanting to abstain on the record? All right, all those in favor of Resolution 1 as printed on the screen, accepting Fairview Drive in Phase 3 of Barnbrook Estates as a town-maintained road?
It's Farview Road.
Farview, I'm sorry, Farview. Farview Drive. All those in favor of it becoming a town road, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone wanting to abstain on the record? Congratulations, Wayne, your road is approved.
Thank you.
Okay, Resolution Number 2, this is the long one about the transfer of property from the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation for the Gelati Road project.
Keith Landa waving a brief document.
Okay.
Aw, come on.
And who's second in that? John McPartney, I can recognize you. All right. All those in favor of any discussion about reading of the motion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Anybody want to abstain for the record? Great. Any questions on this or comments? Discussion is on the floor now.
Just call us a little bit after the proper yet stuff that the state has been holding for a long time.
Do you want to...
Tony?
You want Tony to do it?
Tony, you want to quickly explain the pieces?
I'll tell you how old this is. It's leftover from a project when I was in office. So that's very old.
So this was the very first project that Cheryl assigned to me when I first started with the Town of New Fairfield years, over 20 years ago. So interesting enough, we were doing some survey work related to the sewer design and our surveyor called us and said, "There's some really odd information that I'm encountering that says the state actually owns portions of Gelati Road." And he says it looks like it goes back to a project that the state did for the town in the 90s. So sure enough, after we did some research, the project was completed, but the state forgot to turn over the pieces of property that they secured in order to build Gelati Road and make improvements to Gelati Road. So they're very eager to give this property back to us. They realize they made a pretty big mistake and all these years, they've actually had liability for Gelati Road and they want to shed that liability as quickly as possible. So that's a brief history. I could go on for about two hours over it, but hopefully that helps kind of put everybody's understanding together.
And these are just small pieces scattered?
These are small pieces. Some are grading easements, some are... There's three takes that were actually done to improve the alignment, but the rest of that is, it's all small little parcels.
Thank you.
Any further discussion of this resolution? Seeing none then, unless I see a hand go up, we'll move to a vote on this resolution as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, anybody... Do you want to be recognized for the record? Okay, anybody who wants to abstain for the record? Okay. All right, that one's done too. Number three. This one has to do with the ordinance about licenses and business regulation for peddlers and vendors and a change to that, an amendment to that ordinance. Would someone like to make a motion to put it on the table? Peggy Cat Coston made the motion.
That's the second.
Okay, there was a second. Any discussion on this?
What exactly is the amendment that you're making?
So the fee currently is $25 for a solicitor permit. We're increasing that to 250. And we're also putting a time limit from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So solicitors can't be coming to your door prior to 9:00 AM or after 6:00 PM.
Yes, I have a comment.
Yes.
I'd like to say that the ordinance doesn't go far enough. It does not specify when they come around and you don't have a permit or they lie to you without having a permit. It doesn't specify how they will deal with it, just if the police will handle, but it doesn't specify what the consequence is. They come and they have a new trick now. They come on little self-propelled, what's it called? Little mini segways that they come at speed, up the driveway, down the driveway. They're gonna get hurt and then they sue the homeowner. I think that the consequence has to be significant enough that they don't continue to do it without license and come on your property all hours. And when you tell them to leave, some of them are very nasty and they don't leave. And when you do call the police, I have to say, "Please come here as quickly as it can." But generally, they have disappeared just as the police are coming and they don't get caught. So yes, I do agree that you should raise the fee, but I think there should be specific consequences, especially for the ones that do not have a permit and they get caught. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion?
Just a quick question, does the existing ordinance have language that would apply to Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, nonprofit organizations in general? Or would the Girl Scout come and just stop, because you have to pay $150?
Third exempt.
Third exempt. Is it all nonprofits?
I believe yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Jen.
Is there a specific pass or a document that they need to produce when they come to your door?
They should all have a... Yes, they should all have an ID badge from the town.
From our town.
Yes, issued from the town, yep.
Any other comments or questions?
That's a question. What do you talk about peddlers and solicitors? I'm not sure exactly who that is.
Melissa?
I don't have the exact definition.
How some improvement, modern building, asphalt paving companies. I've had some three people not those one.
So the question up here was exactly who are solicitors and peddlers? And Melissa is finding the answer.
If I have the whole thing here.
The definition.
I have a question.
Yes. So I... I didn't exactly hear you, but I think you said that there are people that are coming in your driveway, maybe trying to steal cars. Is that what you said?
Yeah, there.
The... My take on this, and I will let Melissa speak to this or any other selectman who wants to, but for somebody trying to steal something from your property, you don't need that in an ordinance, that's against the law. So you just call the police. If you, even if you just have a suspicion, you call the police and they'll come and investigate. Does that, does that help? Okay.
Did somebody want to know a definition of who is a vendor or solicitor?
Solicitors and peddlers, yeah.
Well, their itinerant vendor means any person, whether principal or agent, who engages in a temporary or transient business in this town selling goods, wares, and merchandise, and who for the purpose of carrying on such business hires, leases, or occupies any building or structure for the exhibition and sale of such goods, wares, or merchandise in the town. A peddler or vendor means any person, whether a resident of the town or not, who goes from place to place, house to house, or street to street, or one who occupies private property for the purpose of selling, or bartering, or carrying for sale, or barter, or exposing therefore any goods, wares, merchandise, meats, fish, fruits, flowers, plants, trees, vegetables, truck, garden, or farm products, or provisions. A solicitor means any individual 18 years of age or older, whether a resident of the town or not, traveling by foot, wagon, automobile, motor truck, or any type of conveyance from place to place, from house to house, or from street to street, taking or attempting to take orders for the sale of goods, wares, and merchandise, personal property of any nature whatsoever for future delivery, including, among other things, the sale of books and magazines, or for services to be furnished or performed in the future, whether or not such individual has, carries, or exposes for sale a sample of the subject of such sale, or whether he is collecting advanced payments on such sales or not provided. That such definition shall include any person who, for himself or for another person, hires, uses, or occupies any building, structure, tent, railroad boxcar, boat, hotel room, lodging house, apartment, shop, or any other place within the town for the sole purpose of exhibiting samples and taking orders for future delivery. Those are the three types of people covered here.
Just want to clarify, I think I said 250 and it's not, it's 200. So I just wanted to make that clear.
This is an example of government in action. They could have said anybody trying to sell something and come to your door. They took like three paragraphs to say it, but I think we all kind of get the idea. Yes, there's a question in the back.
I just want to make sure I'm not going to ask the better way.
It's over 18.
The question was, is it gonna impact kids doing lemonade stands on their own property?
No, this is over 18.
You have to be over 18 if you're gonna create a problem here. So children doing things like that, nobody's gonna have a problem with that.
Any other questions or... Yes, all the way in the back there?
We have to make sure that we don't we don't change the process of starting corporate corporations or companies that do business around the United States or even internationally.
They're part of the exemptions, actually.
They are, are they?
Yes.
Somebody else have their hand up?
Just a quick question, for those of mine who want to see some change in wording or some additional things added, would that have to go through the zoning board before? This group doesn't have the authority to make any such changes, does it?
Well, you could make an amendment to the ordinance tonight, but I think typically the way it's done is whatever, if this gets passed or if it doesn't get passed, you would bring your suggestions to the Board of Selectmen and they would vote on it. It goes through the Board of Selectmen to approve an ordinance and send it to a town meeting. And a lot of times, even though we could do it at the town meeting, it's better to do it the longer version because you have a little bit longer to think about it and get the wording exactly right and run it by the town attorney if you need to. So for people who would like to see additions, contact the Board of Selectmen.
Cheryl, if I could just support what Cheryl said. First of all, A, we don't really have the language of the proposed ordinance in front of us, so it makes it very difficult for us to edit proposed amendments on the floor. And B, it's a lot easier not to do law three with 30 people in the room than to put it back to the responsible.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to ask a question, does this regulate around home offices?
No, this is solicitors coming door to door.
The question was, does it have anything to do with home offices?
And this is gonna problem?
Yes.
Yes.
You may have answered this, but how does this work in its own tax? Solicitation down in Stop and Shop? There's a number of civic organizations that are down there. Do we need to get a permit?
One of the exemptions is individuals or groups who are residents of the town and act for or on behalf of any charitable, civic, or religious organization, fire company, or any school-sponsored organization in the town. So I would, I would say that that probably constitutes an exemption.
Isn't that also...
Yes, ma'am.
Isn't that also some shop, they apply the property so they can grant permissions to whom they want to?
Well, a town ordinance would sort of overrule that. But I think as long as you're not at Stop and Shop trying to raise money to put in your own pocket and you're raising it for a community good, according to what Tonra there, it sounds like we'd be pretty safe. And we have been all along. This is just an amendment that's modifying a few words in this...
Mostly the fee.
Existing ordinance, yeah.
Right, it's the fee and just putting that time. And we've had a lot of issues where, you know, families are trying to have dinner or put their kids to bed and people are knocking on their door at 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night. And, you know, obviously when it's dark out, it gets a little worrisome, so.
Right. Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
What about distribution of political material?
Are you selling it? Okay, then I think you're okay.
Well, let's say an official wants to run for office and they want to distribute information to the homeowners who live here. Is that permitted?
Yes.
Yes, this...
I think what an organization is exempt as well.
And I think, I think they are exempt, but this also refers to peddlers and solicitors who are trying to sell something. So... It wouldn't affect, for example, Jehovah's Witness or something like that, just entirely different. Have we, have we done most of the questions? If not, if it's okay, then I'm gonna move forward without a motion to call the question and we will just vote on this unless... If you've got something else that you want to talk about, get your hand up now. Okay. Then all those in favor of amending this ordinance as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. And anyone who wants to abstain for the record, let us know. All right, that passed. Who next, Ashley? Okay. Number four. This has to do with the adoption of an illicit discharge and connection stormwater ordinance. Would you like me to read the resolution so you can hear it?
Yes.
Okay. Be it resolved that the action... Be it resolved that the action upon the adoption in, of an illicit discharge and connection stormwater ordinance regulation, non-stormwater discharge to the storm drainage system to the maximum extent practicable required by federal and state law be approved. Would someone put that, make a motion in a second to put that on the floor?
So...
Keith Landa made a motion to put it on the... Second by Lori Landa. Okay, now we can have a discussion if people have questions. We still have our town engineer here who is probably
hiding.
The best person to answer stormwater management questions. Yes, Keith?
Yeah, Keith Landa, Tony obviously is the best one to answer. But I'm on conservation and the wetlands. We're basically bringing town ordinance into line with our requirements with state and federal regulations. So this is pretty much just a cleanup of our town ordinance to make them consistent.
Questions? Comments? Yes?
What is the problem it's trying to solve? How are we, what is the problem? What is the, what is the problem? I don't know what you mean.
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear what you said. You said what the...
In other words, what is the problem it's trying to correct? Or how are we not in compliance now that we will be in compliance? I don't understand exactly what we're hoping to happen.
Just for the record, Tony Adarola, town engineer. In 2004, the state, based on federal regulations, required all the states in the United States to put together some form of general permit to protect the waters of the state that we live in. So Connecticut allowed all municipalities to come in and be grandfathered under what's called a general permit. So that's 2004. Fast track that down to 2016, 2018, they've enhanced and created other requirements for municipalities to meet. One of them has to do with illicit discharge. So most folks may not really understand what an illicit discharge is. I'll give you an example of it. Somebody has a phallic septic system and instead of having that sewage back up all over their lawn, they'll run a pipe out to like a catch basin. Obviously, that sewage goes into a catch basin, then goes into our water bodies, could be streams, could be a lake, could be intermittent waterway. So the state in 2018... So, the state in 2018 forced municipalities, under the general permit, to adopt an ordinance that allows you to enforce people doing those types of activities. And unfortunately, we're a little behind. We may be audited. If we get audited and we're out of compliance, two things can happen. One is they can kick us out of the grandfather general permit that we're in, and actually request us to actually put together our own permit, which will have very specific requirements, very costly to secure that permit. The other thing that they could do is they can actually issue a consent order demanding that the town put the ordinance together. So, I think if we're able to pass this tonight, we might be able to, you know, not be impacted by any enforcement, but it is something that eventually the town will kind of be audited and will be out of compliance with.
So, other than septic, what are some other examples?
So, other examples I can give you is manufacturing. You may, you may have a manufacturer in town that ends up discharging what would be industrial waters into catch basin. What else is there? Anything that?
Changing your oil quality?
Yes, oil is a very, very, a very good example. Anything that's getting into our drainage ways and our waterways that really impacts the quality of the water, all of the wildlife that lives in those bodies of water, that's what this is protecting. It's allowing the town to enforce that removal of the illicit discharge from a storm drain, and, and that's what the state's looking for. They just want to make sure that you have rules or regulations in place where if even the state comes down and says, "Oh, Fairfield, you need to remove this illicit discharge," that the town has the right and has an ordinance to do that.
Do we assume that chemical and herbicidal lawn treatments can only get into this system via stormwater?
So, there's a lot of best management practices for people applying pesticides to their lawn to control, you know, whatever they're looking to control. So, that's not considered an actual illicit discharge. It would be something that you can point to, and you can trace back to a very specific property. Yeah.
I don't quite understand when you say a storm drain, we have drains in front of our, in front of our house going down. Are those storm drains?
That's correct, yeah. Any catch basin that you see in front of your property that conveys stormwater to a discharge point, the discharge point usually is a, a brook, a drainage way, could be a pond, it could be a lake, that, that is what they're concerned about, is that direct discharge.
In other words, with the Septic Act, you have a problem, it should be going down there.
It should not be going down there. Yeah, you don't want it going down there, yeah, yeah. Because, believe it or not, that sewage flow will impact the wildlife and will deteriorate the quality of the water.
This doesn't necessarily have to be right in front of your house either, right?
That's correct.
You could go blocks and blocks in a storm sewer, and you've still illegally discharged.
That's correct. It's not necessarily the drain in front of your house, it could be something that's out in the woods that somebody ties into, or is, has created an illicit connection into that basin.
Yes, sir?
What if the storm drain drains onto your property?
Again, you would end up being, this ordinance would actually help us eliminate that illicit discharge that's dumping onto your property, yeah.
How would it do that?
Well, we would be able to enforce the removal of the illicit discharge.
But if the illicit discharge, or the discharge itself is a storm drain that drains onto your property, who would enforce that against the town? Because it's the town that's draining onto your property.
So, I want to make sure I understand your question correctly. You have a drainage pipe that's dumping onto your property.
Yes.
Somewhere upstream, it could be 10 catch basins up, somebody has installed an illicit discharge, something that should not be in a storm pipe. We would then trace it back to that property owner, and this ordinance would allow us to have them disconnected. It gives us the right and the opportunity to disconnect that discharge. So, the property owner that ultimately, 10 catch basin down, the stream is impacted by it, will no longer be impacted by it.
Question, what, so here's the town the right to correct, and what is the penalty for being the illegal discharger?
There, there are some penalties in there for people that are not compliant. Usually what we found is, once an illicit discharge individual has been contacted, they usually work pretty quick to disconnect it. But there are some fines, and there are some fees if they don't decide to disconnect it, that we could enforce against them. The other thing that we could do at that point is actually contact the state and help them, help us enforce that illicit discharge regulation.
Wasn't your question, though, what if the town is the illegal discharger?
No, that wasn't.
Oh, that wasn't, okay. This would apply to the town as well.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yes, ma'am.
Any motion to vote?
Jessica Sanchez, a motion to call the question.
There's a second here from Keith. All those in favor of calling the question, which means we would end discussion of this and move right to a vote, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Or abstaining for the record? All right, then, all those in favor of this resolution, which is number four up on the screen, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. And anybody who wants to abstain? Okay, that resolution passed unanimously as well. Number five, be it resolved that an appropriation of $100,000 from the general fund unreserved for Department of Public Works road repair be approved. Would someone want to put that motion on the table?
So.
Kim Hanson?
Hanson.
Jake, seconds. Any discussion on this? This was mostly for gelati, is that?
It's because of the, yes.
To cover what they took from other things to do at gelati? And it looks lovely.
It does, doesn't it?
It's like a little speedway, but.
Unfortunately, yeah.
Any discussion on this? Okay, then, with, with no discussion coming forth, all those in favor of the $100,000 appropriation to road repair, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say nay. And anyone who wants to abstain for the record, speak up. That was a yawn, right, not an abstain. Okay. Number six, be it resolved that an appropriation of $600,000 from the general fund interest income and $350,000 from general fund property taxes prior for medical reserve fund transfers in be approved. Kind of read that awkwardly, but it's basically transferring $950,000 into the medical reserve fund. And this is from, Thor, you're here, this is from last fiscal year's revenue?
The $350,000 is for property taxes, prior year property taxes.
Prior year, okay.
The $600,000, all right, it's in the general fund now, but it is actually, I get the years correct, it's actually 25, 26, no, I'm sorry, it's not, 24, 25 surplus.
So, this is money that's already been collected and is here?
Yes.
Okay. And I ask, for those of you who don't know, I ask Thor, because she's the chairperson of the Board of Finance, that's why I ask her.
And also, I make a bearing too, is this was approved by the Board of Selectmen, and it was approved by the Board of Finance.
Can I make a motion to start a discussion? It will be longer than that.
Is there any discussion?
Have we been voted on yet, to put it on the floor?
Oh, did?
No.
Holly, did, did somebody put this on?
I make, I'll make the motion.
Okay, Jessica, is there a second? I'm sorry, Jessica, I got confused. Jake gets the second again. He gets his hand up very fast. Okay, discussion of this? Questions? Yes, Jessica?
I just want to share one other thing.
Oh, Thor, I'm sorry.
We are in a process of trying to build up our medical reserve fund. It is very important for the town, because this year, on the taxes, we have put a lot of additional information into the medical fund. We provide, we pay for the claims of all of our employees on the school side and county who have our insurance. And by paying our own claims, I want to do for last year, we saved approximately $3 million, if you believe it. Because our insurer, which is Anthem Blue Cross and Shield, which is excellent, our insurer does not make any profit over our claim. We are controlling that situation. So, we are very aware in the Board of Finance that we need to build up our reserve, and that's what we're starting to do, hopefully.
Just a quick question, do we have any concern that this nearly $1 million will have an effect on the 26, 27 budget? Because essentially, we've increased the tax load of current budget, and it's going to create a hole for us in 26, 27.
It's, no, what we're trying to do is eliminating adding, as we did this year, we added, we already added about $1.5 billion to the medical. We're trying to finally get a handle on this. This is not a stall, but this is only going to take us out of the hole right now. Our finance director is also here, he can speak to exactly where we are right now in our medical reserve, rather than me shooting out some number. I believe I know the number, but he's right here.
Well, and most relevant to the motion that we're discussing tonight, that with this additional appropriation, we would be closing out fiscal year 25 with a positive medical reserve balance of about $225,000. It is currently sitting negative until we actually approve this appropriation to replenish that fund, based on last year's actual balance.
And what's, what's the target years down the road for what was normally the medical fund balance in previous years? And we're saying it's going to be $250,000, I think you said to the pastor, but normally, what's that target, is it millions, a million and a half? What's, what's that equity balance for that fund?
I'd like to expand to that. Board of Finance, Medical Insurance Subcommittee, which we meet each month, and then we report along with consultants to the full Board of Finance. So, every Board of Finance member is now aware of this. All right, we are in the process, we've already had two meetings about it. We are actually, for the first time that I'm aware of, creating a policy, a board policy to fund, to continue to fund this issue, because we cannot have what happened this year, particularly this year, like the prior fiscal year, 22, 23, the medical plans and medical issue was fine. We actually had a good year. This year, the medical claims were extremely high. Also, prescription drugs were much higher. We did not see that in 22, 23. So, right now, the Board of Finance, through that committee, and then to the full board, we are actually going to hopefully pass a policy which will help guide us. We have not needed one before, we need one now, that's my opinion, without, without belonging there.
I'm just asking if there's a target number that we want to see that plan eventually built up?
Yes, it's going to be 20% over what we project our claims to be, okay? So, 120%, 100% would be what we have to pay out. We want 20% over that right now.
What do we think this year's claims are going to be?
You mean?
So that I can figure out 20% of that would be?
We don't, we know that number right now, but our, what happens is our consultants, at a certain point in the year, gives us a number to shoot for. He is going to be involved in this process. Last year was a huge surprise.
Do you know what last year's claims were?
Yes, I believe they were, the whole process, including Toby, Anthem, who are just managing our fund, but most of it, 99% was in claims. I think we were at a total of 9.3 million.
So, 20% of that would be?
One, one.
27, 18, so.
Yes, 28.
And we're going to get $250,000 after we make this transfer.
That's correct, that's why we need a policy, we have to build this up.
So, that's disturbing, thank you.
Yes, it is, it is disturbing.
Any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, then, all those in favor of this resolution appropriating this money to the medical fund from these two different sources, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. All right, and anybody who wants to abstain for the record? Okay, don't get too excited now, because we're on the last one. Number seven, be it resolved that the action to enter a lease agreement with VCP Realty LLC, Caraverge, for the installation and operation of a solar photovoltaic project at 33 Bigelow Road, New Fairfield, Connecticut, 06812, be approved. Is there someone who would put this on, this motion on the floor? Lori, is there a second? Liz?
Millie.
Oh, I'm sorry, Millie, I'm sorry. I can't see with the darn, so. Any discussion, questions about this? We have Brian, are you here?
Yes.
Okay, and Tony, I had a roll up. Brian is from Veragey. And Melissa? Yes, Keith?
Yeah, so Keith Landa, Karaki Hillrood. Let me begin by saying I'm a strong supporter of solar and sustainable energy projects, and I'm a strong supporter of public private partnerships. Let's be clear, this is not a public private partnership. What we're talking about is the town leasing a part of our land for 25 years to one company, which will lock the D S series of companies. I've done the math. Our approved budget this year had non-tax revenues of 8.53 million. If this project were in place and generating $43,000 worth of rental, of lease income, our non-tax revenues would be 8.57 million. Follow that out, and I look at my taxes, this would save me a little over a penny a day on my taxes. Right? So, this is the benefit that we're getting. To do that, we are turning over control of town property for 25 years. The $43,000 that we get in year one declines over time, does not increase. And if you think about it in terms of inflation-adjusted dollars, it declines even faster. For that, like I say, we are giving up the opportunity to do better projects. We are giving up any direct benefit in terms of savings on our utilities for our schools and our town. The energy generated by this project does not offset our utility costs. We have no ability from this project to sell excess capacity generated on the market to generate revenue. So, actually, instead of increasing revenues over time, we are decreasing revenues over time, and, and to do that, we are giving up control of the, of our town property, and are able to do anything meaningful on that property. So, as strongly a supporter as I am of solar, I'm going to have to vote no on this one, because it's just not a good idea.
Yes, sir.
Hi, John McCartney, big advocate of solar.
Big advocate of solar, we have solar. It is so important to do this, but this isn't a solar project. On the town, it's a land lease. At the Board of Selective Meeting, it was described as a land lease. Have you ever heard anyone leasing their property, a piece of property that they own for 25 years, and will get a declining rent for that property? I don't. I think this is a terrible project. I think it was done way too quickly. I think there are many other opportunities for the town, and I too will be voting no on this project.
Sure. Brian wanted to... Brian, come on.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for your time this evening. Brian Fitzgerald of Verigi. So just to clear a couple things up, the structure of the arrangement...
Can you move closer to the microphone?
Sure, yeah. The, the structure...
It's not on a PA, it's, it's just for recording.
Then just speak, bud.
Yeah, no problem. The structure of the arrangement is to deliver credits through the NRES program from the project out to landfill to town accounts. So instead of receiving a lease payment, you're getting allocated credits to your accounts, you're getting monetary credits to town accounts. Now, this structure, one thing that wasn't mentioned, is it totally alleviates the town's risk of capital to develop the project.
Well, what, just let him finish, and then I'll take more discussion.
So one of the most important aspects that wasn't mentioned just now is developers like us, like Verigi, we invest in these projects initially, spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, and they don't work out all the time. We've lost hundreds of thousands of dollars developing projects that we put our own capital at risk. Now, the reason you see municipalities leasing their landfill, the overwhelming majority of the... It's because they're not going to risk town dollars. Now, when we say risk, if the town was going to start this project today, you'd have to spend $25,000 on an NRES deposit in two weeks, and then you paid $5,000 for an interconnection study in four weeks, then you'd have to pay $85,000 for an interconnection study in about two months. That whole process takes about two years before you know if you can interconnect that project to the grid. So you're going to spend $100,000 at least in the next three months before you even have any idea if your project is going to work. Now, with what recently happened at the federal level changes, the lovely Beautiful Bill Act, you will have to safe harbor this project by July 6th of next year, which also means you have to spend at least 5% of CapEx costs. So now you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars more before you've even found out if ever source will let you connect to, to the grid. So that doesn't even take into consideration the condition of the landfill. Then, I should say, co-terminus to that, we go to Connecticut D, review all the landfill documents, look at the cap, make sure it's suitable to host a solar project. So not only can we get knocked out once by interconnection, we get knocked out again by the landfill and it not being suitable to host that project. So there are opportunities all over the place for you to lose every dollar you've put into the project from day one. That's why the landfill lease is the most common method that municipalities use to lease their landfills. Not a whole lot of other things going on on top of a landfill cap. So you're not necessarily missing out on, you know, the opportunity to go sports complex or other things up there, right? Maybe you can capture landfill gas, but now you're talking about a whole nother realm of project. So that's traditionally why, again, the structure is towns lease their land, in this case, landfills, and then you push all of the financial responsibility into the developer. That's our business, that's what we're meant to do.
Don't go too far. Keith?
So that's all I'm good at, but the question before us tonight is not whether to let the developer do this project or for the town to do the project. Be clear, the question tonight is to approve or not approve this particular project. Turning this project down does not mean all of a sudden we're going to start doing all this stuff. Because as was mentioned, this project was not as well thought through as I would have liked. But again, the question tonight is, do we, do we approve locking ourselves in for 25 years to a declining revenue stream? Or do we just say no, this is not good enough for us now, and we'll, we'll look at options later?
I have a question.
Just let me call on you first. You had a question before.
Yes, the gentleman mentions credit, like, what, what is the credit? Can you give numbers?
Right, on, on the bill, it's 43,000 dollars.
But in addition to the lease amount, he said that they paid, what is the credit that would be leaking for the town, I'm assuming?
So the structure is, the lease payment is effectively a dollar. It's a dollar because all of the financial benefit comes to the NRES credit, which is a monetary allocation of dollars to town accounts, which you have made enough load to absorb. There's no concern about you not using the credit. So $43,000 a year long, it averages out to be $40,000 over 20 years. It is a 20-year lease because the NRES term is 20 years. So it's a 20-year lease term, you can sell it in 20 years. It's $43,000 a year.
If you looked at the proposal when it came in, the, the recommendation to take a credit was because the credits were greater than the direct payment.
Point of order, should the moderator be commenting?
I'm just trying to answer a question. If there's, if somebody wants to call a point of order, we can vote on it.
I did that.
Is there a second?
All second.
Okay? You want to have a discussion about what the moderator can and cannot say?
This, this could be a parliamentary issue, it could be a vote-on issue.
Oh, yes, it would. It's a vote. When somebody calls a point of order on the moderator, it, it is up to people to decide whether I have overstepped my boundaries.
That's just strictly about its rules, which I think would be in your favor, but I'm not sure.
I don't, I don't know. And, and whatever the town meeting decides, I'm fine with that. All those in favor of the moderator stepping down, say aye.
That wasn't what I was asking. I was asking for the moderators to comment.
Well, I think if the moderator wants to speak, moderator might have to step down, is what I, I think you're saying. Is that what you're saying?
Correct. Could you let Charles finish talking, please?
Yeah.
All right. Let's just, let's move on to the moral questions, then. Yes?
Laura?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, I'm not clear on this. I'm sorry, I forgot your resume.
Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. I'm not clear on two things. All right, if the project goes ahead, because everything's okay, do we get, in addition to the first $43,000, do we get also other money to offset electrical? Do we get that?
No.
So can I, can I just step in for one question?
Come to the mic.
Because I, I think Warren's using terminology that, if you're in this business, you would understand it, just understand that the lease payment is a dollar. But the $43,000 annual revenue directly offsets our bills, our electric bills.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
That's correct. So it, it is a credit directly to your, to the town of Fairfield's electric bills, and one of the requirements is, can you actually benefit from the $43,000? Our electric bills, just on a high school, allows us to take that benefit. So it is, it is a direct credit to that bill when, you know, when it comes in, it comes in a, the credit is a quarterly, quarterly basis. So you'll see your quarterly infusion of revenue to offset those bills every quarter.
And I want to follow up, my follow-up, my second part was this. I'm not understanding, if, if our area that we are committing to this, if that is not suitable, or something else is not suitable for us to hook in, is the entire project then mooted, all right? Is it legally mooted?
It, it would, yeah. The lease would be determined at least if we couldn't move over the project because of the connection and the cash flow.
Okay, thank you.
And there's no, and there's no liability of capital investment, right?
Right.
They, they would lose all the money they put...
There's no way they could.
Let's just be clear, too, that what's being voted on tonight in this resolution is the lease for the landfill. It does not include a future lease that may or may not come to a town meeting for the roof of the high school.
You need to unlock your record first.
Pardon me?
Sorry.
Oh. Oh, it's Siri giving me help, okay. Jessica?
So there's no escalation for an increase in electrical cost in association with the credits? So it's capped at $43,000 forevermore based on this lease?
So what happens is, the credit amount is fixed per kilowatt hour, and the project productivity decreases a half a percent per year. That's industry standard, that's just the interpretation. It's modeled into the financials and the performa, it's because the panels produce a half percent less on average each year. So you start with, with total production of, you know, accident line down percent, which is why it's...
But it has no comparison against actual kilowatt hour cost versus electricity?
No, it's fixed.
Over a portion of time?
It's fixed.
Yes, ma'am, following that.
Okay, so we have a transfer station versus the cap landfill, those are correct, or am I wrong?
Well, they're two separate things. There's a cap landfill, and there's a drop-off center at the same, next to each other.
What you said about our cap landfill made me feel that we felt that the land was already contaminated, useless, and I have great environmental concerns about the solar panels, especially if they're palestorm damaged and degradated over time. I'd also like to know, the gentleman, is there a published schedule and guarantee return for us? And making that to this leads a question, is it indexed for inflation with the rising cost of electricity while we're going to have diminishing returns as our payment or credit is fixed? And electricity costs go to the roof because they're predicted to double with all the AI data centers that are being built? So I don't feel that this is a very good deal for the town, but we have control of that property, which we may decide to other things with, that do not need to be pursued by management. I don't feel that not having our returns indexed to inflation and the cost of rising electricity is very good. And I don't like the fact that this is our payment for the lease, and then we have to weigh on credits. Why doesn't your development company give us a fixed payment, and then you give credit?
Because it works out that you hire...
It's much, much of a bad thing.
Yeah, it's a, it's a greater benefit. It's a total of, the project won't count so much.
I would probably no.
So this is a step back a little bit. The landfill surface itself, we go through a pretty thorough permitting, the landfill itself, which the panel is installed with, you have to go through a very thorough permitting process. And so we're, we're working out about a dozen materials. The solar panels that we'll be putting on that landfill are pure solar, the vaporifer type, they do not contain any heavy chemicals, they've passed T C L P tests for toxicity, and they have to be considered hazardous waste. There's nothing hazardous being put on the property, we have according to...
Who's going to take the cleanup when they have the snow?
Excuse me. Please only talk when you're recognized.
I'm sorry, I thought you, I thought you were...
No, you're not going back. You get a chance to ask a question, and other people have their hand up as well, who should get to ask questions. Jake, you haven't had a shot.
My question could call me, actually. So not moving solar, and what else can that property be used for?
So I, I was actually just going to bring awareness to the fact, this is a cap landfill. You can't do anything on it. Solar projects have been accelerated and have been favored by Connecticut D and P on landfill, and this installation guarantees that there's no disruption to the cap. And his company's going to have to prove that, and they're very thorough about evaluating these. But just so we're clear, there's no other opportunity for development on that landfill. Another solar project, you know, whatever it may be, maybe, but you can't put a buff field on it, you know, you really, it would require an extensive amount of permitting to alter the use of that property, other than what it is today as a landfill. The solar project is an easy way to generate some revenue and not impact the future use of that potential property.
Kim?
Do we, would we hold any ban for failure to, to continue to make electrician, electricity, or specifically for decommissioning and end in life and for removal of this equipment?
In the lease agreement, there's a decommissioning provision that forces the developer to operate the project.
Do we hold a ban on that?
Yeah, sure, yes.
For... Do you know what the value of that ban is?
It's just shy of $100,000. So based on the system size, 900, I'm sorry, 97,500. And that is not, sorry, has not included any cost of metal, copper, carbonized seals in your cycle. That is purely a show of the ability to move.
And would that, just, would that ban can also come into play seven years from now? You go bankrupt, nobody wants to buy the business from, is that banned then, in the X B F, we need that material?
Not under that provision. You know, operated solar projects, bankruptcy happens, those assets take on bankruptcy and pre-end of business cycle, not this way. Thank you.
Joe, you have a question?
Just a quick question, I want to clarify for everybody here. So you're basically telling us you're going to add to some trash.
Quick panels on top of landfill that...
Sounds good to me.
Let's see. We haven't called on yet.
This is so...
Please, please, call down, see, get your...
New transmission lines coming in, and where will they come in from? So the lease area would be 5.75 acres.
5.75 acres of panels?
Of, of panels, a total lease area. So the amount of panels would be significantly smaller than your road space.
What would that, what would that take?
You know, what, what amount? Maybe an acre and a half of panels, total, panels themselves, not fully set back to the road space. The projects will be disconnected, you should be moved. So same distribution lines, not idle, that operate out of it, say, but they have a transport system for it. So not idle, it's considered a beautiful, typically a 30-point, 20-degree, depending on the study. And they have to update those lines, initially back, you know, sources that probably have been out.
I think that's on big ones.
Correct. Initially back from the sources that probably have a mile and a half of reproductory that there is, effectively needs to have around a mile and a half in the year. And it's cost about a million dollars a month to go now. So the international is about a million dollars. And that will be ironed out with a full study that shows...
Has there been remodeling or, or site plans developed, just so we can see where the panels were, and who, who's impacted from their view?
It's, it's on the lease that was on the town website. I don't have anybody's. Do you have it that we can put up?
It printed very dark, so I don't have a good copy of it, no.
It's a preliminary site land using a landfill cap. So if somebody currently was able to see the landfill cap, and then you have, no one can see the landfill cap?
Oh, here.
Let's see, whoever, I called on, yeah, I haven't called on you.
Jeff, I'll be, appreciate you coming here, kind of taking some things off the chain here, I know it's not easy. But like the gentleman in front said, it is great, we're going to get the money for garbage, that much else you can do with that land space. However, how do we know this is going to be the best option for us? There are a lot of solar companies out there, and this is a land lease deal. What if we got a solar lease deal, where we didn't have to put our own money? For example, I have it on my house. I lease my roof, I get paid significantly less per kilowatt hour than everybody else does in our stores. I have saved tens of thousands of dollars over the past 10 years that I've had it. How do we know we don't have a better deal in us? To me, making $43,000, $40,000 a year is not great revenue for us. We are in sore need of non-tax revenue. To me, this is barely anything. Our cell towers make about $440,000, $50,000 a year. That's what I would consider, that's something that's going to blow my skirt up if I say we're going to get some money for our, our town. That's what I think we should be looking for. We should be looking for a better project, and no offense to you, I know you're doing your job, you have to be here, but I think there's a better deal we can have without putting our, our money into it, but we should get a better value than $40,000 a year. I, I think that's going to be a waste of space, and then whenever, we can't do anything for 20 years from now. So my vote would be for no for this.
So we did put out an RFP, and we did get bids in. This was the best deal that was... This was the best deal that was given to us. Again, the interconnection cost being over a million dollars, you're not gonna get a better deal.
How many bids have we got?
Three.
How many companies are there?
A lot. Exactly.
If I may, there's not a lot of nuclear company doing sand projects right here right now. That's it.
Siri?
Right now?
Yes.
Right now?
And with the federal government?
So again, I wish, I wish I was shown up.
I guess your name is the work that you raise. We're in a spot where the fox is taking it. We're in a spot where the fox is taking it unless anybody is trying to do a solar project, the fox is taking it. We're running out of time, the longer you wait, the more risk you're wanting to take. We're already pretty ready to take, you know, an exorbitant amount of risk based on the fact of the situation. Plus, there's our business in a position where you're gonna have no choice.
Yes.
Reference to the cell tower project in which the town built the infrastructure and makes money from it. I understand that something similar was investigated earlier in which the town basically do the whole project itself and own it. Can somebody actually speak to what that study proved or showed or estimated? Somebody who's familiar with it, with that previous town study?
So I, we did vet out the previous proposal. We brought the vendor in and we had three pages of questions for that vendor. Unfortunately, two things happened. One is they have proposed solar panels that really went into wetland areas and went down the side of the landfill. So their original footprint and their proposal was based on information wasn't the most accurate. The other thing that we found was they had no interconnection cost in there. So the million, million, one point two million interconnection cost was not part of their financial. I actually discovered there wasn't available power on Bigelow, even after being told there was. And we simply did that by going on EverSource. Everybody can do it. You go down on their website, you'll clearly see how much available power is there for solar projects. There was none available and they, they took a really bad assumption based on that. So we spent a lot of time vetting them out. In the end, we decided to walk away from that and actually go on and put together another RFP. And we utilized a consultant that does this work all the time and he helped us through the process. He's not only an attorney, he's a teacher at, was at UConn, now is at Vermont, University of Vermont. But he helped us vet all this out and guided us through the solicitation process.
Cheryl, may I? Yes, you haven't gone yet.
You know, I'm gonna respectfully disagree because I was involved in that project. But I'm gonna go back to what Mr. Landa said. We're here to vote on the project before us. I personally feel this is not the highest and best use of that property. We are locked in to a very low lease rate for twenty-five years, making that property unavailable to us. Maybe the project that was originally proposed is not the final project, but I think there are other options. And I don't think that every option was considered. And, and I think it was Mr. Alvedi or Mr. Landa that pointed out, Mr. Landa, you had the calculations. Forty-three thousand dollars a year doesn't get us where we need to be. And it's a shame to lock ourselves into that, on that piece of property. That's my feeling.
Let me see, who has it? You have the question on us.
Bruce Frank, overly. Does anybody here know whether we could put a cell tower over there?
No, you can't. Probably not on the, not on the cap.
Your group in motion? What's that?
Bob, you, you always could, but I think it's really good to do that when there's still people who wanna talk and ask a question. So it's up, it's up to you.
I have another question.
Yes, hold on.
At the end of the twenty-five years, what is the forty-three thousand diminished to twenty years?
Twenty years, right?
What's that? Twenty years?
Twenty years.
Twenty years. What is it diminished to?
Same thing.
So same value for twenty years?
It stays at forty-three thousand.
Thirty-nine, thirty-nine thousand.
But after twenty years, it's...
Yeah, after twenty years, it's...
So it declines a half percent of your...
My question is, how long, how long was the RFP process that we went through before we even got to tonight?
Probably even eight months. At least eight months.
So to me, it's an economics question, right? If we were gonna go out and find a newer company to put a solar system on this property, right? The most, what's the most that it possibly can achieve on an annual basis? No company's gonna come in and outbid them by tens of thousands of dollars. So if we push this tonight, okay, we lose out on the opportunity cost of that forty thousand dollar over the next year, right? So if, if we found a better deal of maybe about five thousand dollars or more a year, ten thousand dollars a year, it's gonna take us four years to recruit that money. For four years then into, four years plus, could be ten years before we recruit the lost money on this particular project. Doesn't make any sense.
Excuse me. Jake, can I ask you to come up, please?
Okay. You're doing the show.
Because I happen to be on a solar study committee, I'm gonna step out of the moderator chair and let Jake take it over. The discussions. Already because I may not say something.
I think it's important to understand where the federal government and sort of where we stand with solar projects moving forward. The entire opportunity for solar projects is diminishing considerably. This project is on a very tight deadline. And Brian has taken a risk of getting this safe harbor. Safe harbor means getting to a position where the federal government and the state government recognize that it's been constructed to a point where we would, we wouldn't benefit from the tax credits that we would be getting. Post-putting this, we don't know what the federal government's gonna do. We have no idea what Trump administration's been through. But it's not favorable for projects like this in the future. So, you know, we could either run with this deal today, they have forty-three thousand dollars a year to utilize the capital of landfill, that we can't do anything with. Or we potentially, you know, risk it and hope that something down the road changes where the federal government gives other incentives, where a company like Brian's will come in and be able to give us a little bit more of a, not only a lease payment or a credit towards our bill. So that's the dynamic difference. Waiting doesn't play in our favor here. And that's all I wanna kind of really highlight.
John McCarthy stands up first.
So I agree with this gentleman. Here it is, an economic decision. I just don't agree with his way of going. It's forty-three thousand dollars a year. If we don't do this, we're gonna give up forty-three thousand dollars a year. Look at our budget. That's a drop in the bucket, as was pointed out by Mr. Landa. It's also true, things are unfavorable now. Will they be more favorable in the next twenty-five years? I'm gonna guess that they probably will be. So to me, we're risking forty-three thousand dollars a year by not doing this. It's a pretty good risk to take because I think there'll be other uses for that land that we can get more for.
I can't imagine just throwing that money.
Thank you.
Hi, Tom Perkins. I have to disagree on, on the fact that there's other uses for this land. We think Tony's made it pretty clear that there really is not much other use for this land. We're talking about a capped landfill. There's garbage underneath there, folks. You can't put anything other than something like this there. If we were to get forty-three thousand dollars a year to offset our electric bill, I'm in favor of that. Could we get a better deal? Who knows? The process takes so long for permitting. It takes so long for all of the, the government wavering on this, going back and forth on this, that, and the other thing. I think this is really an excellent deal. Other, the only other alternative would be for the town to fund it, to build it themselves and take it all. But then we're paying down all of those construction costs, including that million some odd dollar connection cost, which is outside of the cost of the actual panels and the construction of the array itself. I think it's actually the best deal we're gonna get right now, considering that there are, the future is very uncertain in terms of any support we're gonna get for this in the future.
Gentleman in the back there.
Another use for that property in ten years, small modular reactor, size of a forty-foot trailer, liquid metal powered. Safer than any nuclear plant you're not currently running. It's been good power the entire, entire town for not, almost nothing. There's a perfect place for it. And you could, and I'll bet you in ten years, they're gonna be all of this country. Because they're safe, they're portable, they're scalable. No batteries, no wind to depend on, no sun to depend on. Lithium is everywhere. So there's a lot of opportunity that we gain in probably less than ten years.
Joe?
I have a bare bones question. This electric bill, is it, is it forty-three thousand dollars a year we're saving or forty-three thousand a month? What is our electric bill a month?
Forty thousand a year.
It's forty thousand a year and appreciate over time. What is our, what is our current electric bill a month? Because that would give somebody a good reference point to see if it's adequate.
I think our, I think our total is somewhere around seven hundred and fifty thousand for town and school together.
Both, the school and, because I know that the family has a thousand a month out of itself. Okay.
Joe?
I wanted to talk, because I worked on this committee with Melissa, Tommy, Kurt, and the consultant, and Patty Motta, the purchasing director. And Tony's right, first we went and looked at the previous proposal and that's how it started. Because that was millions of dollars that was being offered to the town and it just seemed, it seemed too good to be true. And as we asked the consultant to go through, the numbers just didn't, they just didn't flow out. And then we found that they have not looked at the connection cost as Tony said. So we decided to sort of start from scratch. And we did make some assumptions. We made an assumption that given a town the size of McFairfield, with the expertise that we have employees, that it was not in our best interest to try and do this as a town project. If we were a Stanford, maybe. I understand from Tony that you can see Vander is not likely, is likely to do a lease if they do a project as opposed to take on it because there's, you could hire a vendor to do that. But we have to have a management skill available over time in this community. And we're, we're kind of small. And we still wouldn't come up with the kind of hundreds of thousands of dollars that had originally been proposed. So we looked at what the other options were. We went out to bid, as Melissa said. The thing that Tony's trying to talk about is the Inflation Reduction Act that was passed by Congress and two years ago. Is what made this possible at all. Remember how under the Biden administration, when they passed the Inflation Reduction Act, there were all these incentives put in for solar? I put solar on my house because of them. I took advantage of it. I got tax credits and so forth. Well, they added municipalities to the list of people who could benefit and who could get those things just like individual homeowners. So all of a sudden, we had the opportunity to always take a look. So we did. And we find that we have dreamed, really, really difficult this property in action. And as Brian said, lots of people did want to, as we talked to them, individually, both during the process and afterwards, right, individual, whatever. So he has a really, a project, and I have other projects I'm doing here that we're chasing anyways. Then we have, they deal with the bill. And now all of those incentives in the Inflation Reduction Act are on. So we can't go back right now. We can't go back and do this. The money's not there, but the subsidies are not there to support it. If, if possibly, over a long period of time, we couldn't make that investment possibly. But we've got the same risk that Brian was talking about, that we might get halfway down and find out we're not as far as, EverSource says, no, E E says, no, whatever. I know this is a small amount of money. I hope for more. I really, that's one of the reasons I worked on this project. We all hope for more. We all believe in solar. We all hope for more. So really, your decision tonight is, it's not that it's, it's forty-three thousand enough compared to zero. And you think that sometime in the next twenty years, your opportunities are going to be there in a way that will upset the town. You know that definitely until at least twenty twenty, those opportunities are not gonna be there. We don't know what happens after that. A lot of the stuff I read said, says that the price of solar is coming down so quickly that our electricity should get cheaper rather than more expensive. But then in Manhattan, we have all this type of problem with EverSource. We have a cul-de-sac and, and sort of artificial complaints of prices. So I know it's not an easy choice. But I'm just asking you to think about forty-three thousand, would you give choices? Would you give it up for the next five, six years? For something that here may not be there sometime after that? Or would you want to, it's sort of like Monty, come on down, we could like go number one or two. And you can take order free and find out that it's, ah, ah. So it's a tough choice. I get that, folks. Just give it your best thought and don't, try not to vote on the basis of purposemanship because we all really put our hearts into making this as possible as possible. And much of it, look at it that way, if you can and all this. And I kind of think there's probably no bad decision here. I get it. It's a side vote now, but I'm hoping that you will vote yes. As we put a lot of time into it, so we're having that issue of voting yes.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
I, I just wondered two things. And it seems like it's not clear, it's a close call. It's not a clear fingerboard. And so, I mean, all the work is for now on both sides. But the other thing I wondered is, you're talking about one acre, oh, two acres. One, one, my question, have, has that landfill been just sitting there all these years and nothing's been happening to it? So that's one question. Now the question is, if... I lost my train of thought. Sorry, I got distracted. No, it's, it's my, um, it comes to the end of January, maybe that's too many hours.
Okay, we'll solve that problem. I promise. No, I just, I just kind of realized, basically. Nothing I've heard in my day anymore. But the fact that we are saying, oh, we gotta, we gotta do this forty-three thousand now or we're gonna lose it, is just such short-term thinking for a project that's gonna last twenty-five years. Yes, I, sort of, I think that the town has to give a drive for sustainable energy, sustainable food. I'm willing to defer my one duty to A, to C, to, to not rush into this.
All right. I, I think first of all, you know, there's been some comparisons, you're talking about a cell tower that came from the bills on that property versus, you know, use of useless property that can be utilized for something. Is it, are you gonna reap hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, tomorrow for it? No, but you are gonna reap some type of revenue.
And, and you have to look at something nonpartisan, okay? Is this going to help the town? And how do you know the next project you're, you're proposing is going to be suitable to be built on that property? You don't know, you're talking about things that could happen ten years down the road. And if you just look at the cell phones and the way the world has changed recently, you cannot do that kind of thing with us and say, ten years down the road, this will be suitable for that, you don't, you don't know those things. But that, that hasn't been invented yet. But you have a useless piece of property, you have a useless piece of property that you can utilize for the goodness of the town. It meets our requirements that you're seeking. So why not move forward with a project that can help this?
Ms. Ritchie?
Yeah.
Um, what is the guarantee of the solar, how, how long does solar have to last?
How long? The panels will last thirty-five years.
And after that, what happens?
Oh, cool. I should say, the panels will last thirty-five years, the lease is twenty years. And the lease, the project must be removed. Removed from the land.
So in other words, then after that, the town, uh, buildings, you know, kind of hanging, and again, sold?
No, so after that, the solar is moved away, the credits from that dollar stops flowing to this place.
But what I'm saying is, well, if the cheaper project, you have solar, now it's all in property, other buildings, and not worry about that anymore.
Not necessarily every building has a different community cost, it's all solar. Also times the cost of the more expensive, smaller projects.
And I think we're talking about different things. We are, we are looking at another project for the new high school roof as well. But this project won't cost us money, so it's not saving us by doing another project.
If I may show one point, over the last twenty-four months, we've signed leases like this for electrical structures in Middletown, Montville, Deeper, those projects have been structured enough. We also have land for leases, Sopper, Summers, Mansfield, Rocky, and it's plain built, and now a lot of something, we have land for leases. We also have a lease for the wind. In that situation, there's security that we're going to be looking at.
Do you see that? Yes.
And that, with the way, we submitted data connection, paid thirty thousand dollars settlement and twenty-five thousand dollars in interest. EverSource came back and sold the estate, cost twenty-seven million dollars for the project. So that project is dead, our fifty-five thousand dollars is gone. That situation exists, that's right. So that's why we're talking about this structure, being a priority for this. That's right.
And that, that's it.
No, it's, I'm not so, but I feel like there's, um, time to pay sense urgency with everyone coming up. And my daddy taught me, you never say yes to a high price sales pitch, it does not matter. So a deal today will be no problem. Now, you're saying now the administration, yes, administration's kind of going already for years. And the next time the ultimate party is in, I, I would give it my money that as far as the pendulum has swung against these type of women and projects. And the other part is that the individuals will go way down the other way with urgency. And the incentives may be much greater, we may get a much better deal in about twenty years or seven years. And we'll still be ahead than when you put a twenty or twenty-five years, this contract is tied. So, now there's a guarantee of that, I realize that. But the urgency that's being created in this room tonight, to get in, to show it in, shoot right in, quick, quick, quick. I don't think that's a, a very good way to make this type of long-term decision. Especially for a relatively small amount of money, when we may get more another time. And I heard someone, I don't know who it is, they may have left, laugh about the modular nuclear. Well, if you have done any research on AI data centers, how many of those?
We can't build data centers.
I'm going to ask if we can stay on topic of.
Sure, but related. Uh, and this, uh, the lady up there who said it about the technology that hasn't been invented yet. You don't know what, five years is a very long time in, in this current period of history. In five years, we may very well have many suitable options for that useless piece of land. That's all I have to say.
Sure.
We may not.
Um, I, I'm also not as supportive as in, one of the reasons why is because I searched, and I was curious how long you all have been in business, and it says seven years. Right, so in my house, when we buy things like windows or, like a roof, like you would buy the companies that have been around for a really long time, and we file this for you, right? Because we know that they have, like, I don't see that with this company yet. And there is concern, legitimate concern, that your company could have sold, uh, to somebody else and then, and what, right, and the, if the contract is not, yeah.
No, the contract goes on. Mostly multi-billion value utility companies buy contracts like this. Next, they're energy, they're just resources, they're the largest operators of energy generating assets in America. They're the ones that typically buy these contracts, so they operate on it for a long term.
Yes, ma'am.
So you said five point seven acres, my concern is about losing the control of that property. And then you said the panels will be fair, like roughly over an acre. What happens, I mean, is the lease for five point seven acres? Like, you're using only one acre profit?
No, so that, the question was, and I'll answer it for someone right here, the amount of panels themselves. So you don't just lay panels down flat and it covers the surface, you orient them on racking, and you grow them.
I do have solar, so I'm very.
Yeah, so the ground with solar is different for the town.
Yes, I understand.
So you put it here, and yes, basically you have a roof. Right, so you have space and acres, but it's not covered by a panel, but it's still on the lease because we have to, you have to hold this whole area of the project, so.
But what is the, what is the, you're saying, how much of it will be occupied by the panels?
Five point seven acres.
So the whole five point seven acres will be occupied by?
It would be fenced in, and everything to do with solar project would be in there.
Well, the advances that's going on with nuclear stuff right now, it's coming down faster than you can imagine. But in three years, it's going to be a revolution with the nuclear suffering, it's going to be a lot smaller, and lots smaller reactors. The, the speed that nuclear and so forth, all this type of energy is being generated, is really advancing rapidly. I wouldn't be surprised if in five years, you could put a, a decent sized trailer truck out there and do most of our own effort. I think it's, give up land for twenty-five years, even though it's junk land, it's, it's land. Things will change from day to day. To give up land for twenty years that we own, not right now, and forty-two, it just, it does, doesn't sound, what you might have to do to get the electric to these buildings, you know? I, I think it's a very poor decision to do it right now. I think with things approved, I would look at it again, but right now, I, I don't think it's a good idea.
Sure.
I will guarantee you that ten years from now, if a small trailer truck can generate enough electricity to take care of in Fairfield, we will find a place to put that. Yes. I'm, I'm, I'm just a guess, this company is still wanting to go through this in this environment. And there was just a huge wind farm project in Connecticut canceled because of the current administration. If we wanted to put a coal-fired plant up there right now, we could probably do that. But I, I'm just a guess, the solar company is willing to take this gamble.
John?
I just want to, yeah, I'll go back to what Cheryl said. If this project doesn't go through, careful, I don't believe we're leaving solar this project. There's been a lot of work, a lot of hard work, and, uh, a lot of work by the community, and I appreciate that work. Cheryl, Cheryl's comment that if this fails tonight, it could be three, five to six years before we get another project in place, you know? Whether it's solar, or it could be a couple of years through the RFP process before we identify and get another project. Because you're talking about quarter of a million dollars over five years of lost revenue to the town. That's, that's significant dollar. Forty-three thousand dollars a year, let me put that in perspective for a second. The average starting salary of a teacher in, in Connecticut is forty-nine thousand. So when we get to the budget cycle, we're faced with really hard decisions, okay? That forty-three thousand dollars from that solar project could save a teacher's job here in the town. And that's the truth.
And I didn't say, here, I'm crystal balling, I'm sorry, I did that. But we have two choices, yes or no, is that correct?
Yes.
So yes means we get forty-three thousand dollars a year. Correct. No means we don't. Correct. And all the people that are coming in to want to use that five acres, I don't see them. That five acres is dead, it's garbage. We have nothing to lose by saying, and I'm not, I, I came in here very much opposed to this. We've got nothing to lose. What we have to lose?
What?
Well, gee, we think you're crystal balls at home, we've got nothing to lose. This is, this is money now, and let's say that your nuclear plant or your, your super plant or your super electric, you can park that trailer on my lawn if you want, I don't care. You're never going to get a nuclear.
All right, we're going to keep the questions, then comments come in.
I have, I have to run wires almost three miles in my backyard to connect into that. That's a lot of work, so I'm just going to let you take the money. It's forty-three thousand dollars, now we're, we're not losing anything.
John?
I have another question. I read in the paper that a lot of solar companies, or a lot of employees are being like, uh, I don't know what's going on with it, I haven't looked into it any further. Um, the companies are having a problem. If down the road, eighty-seven years ago, twenty years ago, I didn't have a cell phone, now all of a sudden I do. And I can't over that. So things do change dramatically over five, ten years. If in seven years down the road, ten years down the road, you guys go out of business, this contract, as we say, is renegotiated, or, or we get sold off to somebody else, or what happens to the panels if you guys go out of business, we sell us to somebody else, or somebody buys us from you? And do we renegotiate that contract for less, more at that time? How does that work?
The contract itself is, stays itself. The project is sold.
I was curious, I wasn't sure.
No, it's a great question, it's a great question. The project is sold, the contracts are sold with it.
Okay.
So it's not like it's sold, it's like, okay, now we're going to take this and that.
No, I wasn't sure.
Same thing with, like, in bankruptcy, you have an asset, like a commercial real estate asset, that says, it's, it's okay. Uh, produces X amount of dollars in revenue, X amount of dollars in expenses, lease savings, whatever. It's worth power to us to somehow cost them.
Okay.
Andrew. Um, our budget in the town is about sixty-eight million, sixty-eight plus million dollars. So to me, forty-three thousand out of that is, is a rock in the bucket. It's not significant, it's not going to save any jobs in the town, it's not going to save anything for anybody. Uh, you know, to John's point, it could be a starting salary for a teacher, but I would bet anybody who graduates from college with a business degree doesn't take forty-three thousand dollars. So we're not going to get this in for all the money. And I don't see that your negatives, I, the positives rather outweigh the negatives at this point. And, um, what are the negatives? No. And then I just could go home, you don't know, because we're in uncharted territory. You don't know, you don't know.
Wait, I, can I ask a question on that then? You're saying we're in uncharted territory, so you're saying a solar project is risky, and you're against all solar?
No, no, but I'm saying that this is, um, the first time that some of the people here tonight gave her about this. And maybe there wasn't, or they weren't, it wasn't brought to the forefront so much that to ask people to vote on it tonight is a little premature. And not being giving us numbers that I don't think have a tremendous impact.
Do you have a response?
No, she knows that it's not.
Ms. Brown?
I did think of it. This is what happens when you're gray hair. But, uh, I, talking about not knowing, not being on board, I don't know whether this, this was last year or two years ago, I was, I attended one of the board's select meetings, maybe it was even three years ago. And Cheryl and the committee were talking about the, the, uh, cost that it would be to hook up on, on Bigelow, and it, it's a lot of money. And I guess because, you know, I mean, I have opinions about things, about a lot of things, but there's a lot of things that I don't know enough about to even have an opinion. But we had this great committee that was, been working on this for years. And it's not clear cut to me whether to vote yes or no on this. But I think for me, I'm a trusting person, and that's what my sister says is my mistake. Like, in this case, I think, oh, yeah, we should trust, I mean, I, take the wheel, like, I'm going to trust that this group of people have had the interest of our towns, uh, at the forefront. And thank you for that, for taking the time to do all that research. And, um, so, you know, I think we just have to vote, and I think we're, we, first of all, I think we talked this to the, to Gavin, and I think it's time to vote. If money wants to change, then what is mine?
I just have a little question. Uh, what are you gauging, if it's, if people vote to go ahead with this, what, what's the implementation?
Implementation?
How far out?
The timeline?
Yeah, till you see that we can get the forty-three thousand.
Before we know it, before we know it, sure, it could be two years.
Two years, okay.
Because it really hinges on, hinges on infrastructure.
All that, okay, so you're about two years.
It's two years before we have the money?
Before you get, before you get the lease revenue, including the lease our monthly.
Hold on, bring it down, guys.
The, um, um, I'm pulling an idea. I was right on the tip of, right at the tip of the, what was your question again? How long?
The timeline.
Time frame. Oh. They have to bid into the INRES program for EverSource by September fourteenth. Okay, that's why we now, if they miss that, we're done. Okay, okay.
Yeah, I mean, pretty much, yeah, because that's the revenue source, that's what creates the ability to send the credits.
I have a technical question. At the termination of the contract for twenty years, does the future connect stay in place?
So what happens is, you have to rebuild EverSource until a point of change of ownership, and that's where you put pole, meter, and go that line? The customer pole, which is a meter pole for the project? Yeah, that would come down, but you're line and out.
The only brand is there.
Yeah, you're line and out, that's all by ever, so you're getting infrastructure upgrade on that road on the diamond project.
It would be nice to have three base power over Trump, Austin.
I would like to ask first to anyone that hasn't asked a question, and if you have a question that you want to ask. Okay, uh, Ms. Ritchie, again?
Yes, did I understand that EverSource will own this?
Not this, not, not the project, just the wires BD2 project.
Okay.
They're the only ones that stay with the known wires in this town.
And they don't get any, they don't get any, they get the grid's money, right? In other words, wherever the, they may.
We have to pay them whatever their charges to install.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I go back to saying, penny wise and pound force, because EverSource is now telling people, oh, you don't have to pay a thing, I pay for our solar, we pay for our solar, you do too, and a lot of other people. And we started out with thirty-two dollars a month of, uh, electricity. All the different patches and everything, we're paying one-seventy. Why do we put that in? They're telling people that, oh, we give, we put it in, you pay just a hundred twenty-five dollars a month. But they don't, they, these people don't realize that when you have the grid, that's why I said have the, on the, the, like, different, uh, buildings, when you have the, uh, the solar, you give to them and your, your, uh, your, uh, monthly bill goes down, so if it's more than what we have. So penny wise and pound force, I think it's really, really sad to look into it as, oh, look, we're getting forty-three hundred, and you just said, it's not until four years. But in the meantime, as Paul said, and the people back there said, it, it seems that nuclear is coming back in a different form and a shape of form, and if it's five years down the line, okay, so maybe we can get forty-three hundred now. But we, we got, we got taken out of the contract in two hundred years, right? We're taking it out of the month, right?
It was a good question.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Wait, wait, who?
Who was the second on that?
Who was the first?
Um, who was Jeff?
Who, Jeff? That was Jeff Albead, right?
Yeah, I think so.
And who seconded it?
I did. All right, to immediate vote, uh, everyone in favor, aye?
Aye.
Nays?
Nay.
That was just another call of the question.
That, that was what you were going to call the question.
Everyone raised your hand.
Wait, wait, wait. Are we still calling? Wait, 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 wait. Are we still calling? Definitely. I just need to know.
At least there was a question.
Calling the question.
Yeah.
Right? Okay, so since it was close, Dan and I are counting hands. So if you're voting to call the question, please raise your hand.
No, I didn't have.
Yeah.
Okay. If you're opposed to the, to calling the question, raise your hand. Anyone abstaining for the record?
No, no. Now, when we vote on the actual question, there should be no more.
Oh, hold on. We have, we should have no more than 40 people voting. So if you signed in as a guest, because you either came late or you're not a property owner, I need you to either go to the back of the room or keep your hand down. Because if the math is off, we will go name by name and have people removed to the back of the room. So please remember, if you are a guest on this list, you are not allowed to vote on the motion.
All right.
That's crazy.
Hands.
So I'm going to move this item to the vote by the show of hands, please. All in favor, ohs?
And keep them up.
Does it say yes on the vote?
Does it say yes on the vote? Nays?
I don't think you need to count.
Yeah.
How many nays did you have?
One and ahs.
It was 22 and 18 was yea, 22 was no.
So there's no. Any extensions? All right, nays, ahs.
Thank you very much, Jake.
Thank you, Cheryl. Throw me in the fire.
The meeting's not adjourned.
Almost in favor of adjourned the town meeting? Could I have a motion? Liz Skolski, second by Jake. All in please, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.